Good evening and welcome to the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five Lewisville Planning Commission meeting with a roll call, please.
Krishna Bangs.
Present.
Krishna Hunt.
Here.
Krishna Choi.
Here.
Krishna Moline.
Here.
Krishna Basket.
Here.
Krishna Mahaly.
Here.
Chair Brownice.
Here.
Thank you. A motion to approve this evening's agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Looking at minutes for October, November, and December, why don't we do them one at a time? Does anybody have any changes for October minutes? Seeing none. Does anybody have changes for November minutes? Seeing none. Does anybody have change for December? Not seeing none. Why don't we have a motion to approve all three then?
So I'm, I was not present for the October meeting, so I intend to vote on the November and December meeting minutes, but I cannot and I will not vote on the October.
Let's do them separately then, yeah, one at a time.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the October meeting minutes, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor with, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On abstention, November. Motion to approve November meeting minutes, please.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the December meeting minutes.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, check. Is anybody here who would like to speak on something that's not on this evening's agenda? Open it up for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Certainly welcome. And yeah, you can come on up if you come up to the podium. Mr. Deister?
Deister.
Deister, thank you.
Uh, sorry.
And then if you actually, if you can bid with your, your name, whether you're a citizen of Lewisville.
Sure.
And have at it. Do you have three minutes?
I don't need, but, but a few moments. My name is Justin Deister. I've been a citizen here and a resident of Lewisville for thirty-five, thirty-five years or so. I see before me, and this is way off topic, but I see before me two flags, the only flags that I think belonged in this building. The flag across the hall here, an LGBTQ flag, I don't believe belongs here at all because it makes me uncomfortable. I don't belong to this group, to that group. I don't belong to that group at all. It makes me feel uncomfortable and unwelcome and uninvited to this community that I've been a part of for thirty-five years. That flag doesn't belong. These two do. These two do. They, they represent everybody, the United States of America and Colorado. They represent everybody. The, that flag does not. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else for a public comment? If you're participating by Zoom or phone, use the star nine or raise hand function. Seeing none, I would like to move into our first item of new business. I will now open the public hearing on a request for a zoning code amendment initially here to the definition of family. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there'll be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. In this case, staff is the, the city is the applicant. So after that, members of the public who have joined this meeting in person, by computer, or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak in person is asked to complete a speaker card, which are available outside of the window. Use the raise hand function if participating by computer or star nine if calling in by telephone. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Two people present at the meeting may pool three, their minutes to allow one person to speak for up to a total of six minutes. The purpose of the public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant, uh, the staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I'll then close the public hearing and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter, may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and city of residence. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing no objections. Do we have notification?
Yes. Notification has been met.
Thank you. Do we have any disclosures from commission now? All right. Thank you. And invite you to take it away.
Thanks. And if I could get the, the slide I have shared. Yeah. So I don't have much of a presentation on this one because it is so targeted, just to sort of a short verbal and happy to go deeper on this if you'd like. So there's a new state law that passed last year that basically says no city can define family in their zoning code based on blood or marriage. And so that's the sort of the simple purpose of this amendment is to comply with that new law. Our current definition does define family by birth or marriage. And so we don't use this definition a lot, although the word family is in our zoning code a lot. Single family, you see that term over and over. But the simple purpose really of this is to comply with state law again. It is actually a recommendation in the housing plan to sort of modernize our definition to address different family arrangements. But that's kind of it on this. It is, in this definition that's up on the screen. So the existing language is struck through. So it's quite a long definition and the new definition would be much shorter. And it's essentially the same definition as what we see in surrounding communities. Erie and Lafayette use the same definition. And one other thing to note is we still have occupancy restrictions in our building code and fire code and all that. So that's covered under this definition. It's just for the purposes of zoning regulations, essentially. So that's really it as far as the presentation. Would happy to answer any questions if you'd like.
Great. Open it up for questions from commission members.
Just one question in point of clarification. So in the new definition, the end of the first sentence has lowercase, single housekeeping unit. And the second sentence just talks about single unit, again lowercase. I'm assuming that those in and of themselves are not defined terms and that they mean the same thing where you say single unit and single housekeeping unit.
Not, let me make sure I fully understand what you.
So should the second sentence state the number of persons living as a single housekeeping unit should not exceed?
I mean, that's fair. Yeah, that's a good, no.
I don't, I have no preference either way. I just want to make sure that it's clear.
I don't think that excluding it weakens it in any way or changes it in any way, but I think it's, it's a fine addition if you wanted to add that as a condition or something like that. Yeah, it's a good observation.
As long as staff has no problem with it, then I have no recommendation. Thanks.
Maybe clean it up before it goes on? I mean, after us?
Yeah.
So what would you like us to do at that point? Do you want it as a condition or?
I think it's, I think it's probably fine the way it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And I assume there's no definition for housekeeping.
For, for what? Sorry?
Housekeeping.
You would consider, sorry, you would consider.
No, I just, I, I, I'm assuming there is no definition.
Oh, oh.
Really means.
I don't think we define housekeeping in our, in our code, but.
But this'll work.
This, this aligns with state law really is in terms of, so you could probably point, housekeeping may be defined in state law. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks. Any additional questions? All right. Um, I will now open it up for public comment. Did anybody want to speak to this issue in particular? And again, for those who are participating by computer, the raise hand function or star nine for the people who are in on phone. Seeing none. Do we have a staff closing statement?
No closing statements.
Thank you. All right. I will now close the public hearing and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented during deliberations. No further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Why don't we run down the aisle here? Maybe Commissioner Mahaly, any, how are you feeling about it?
I'm just kind of just wondering.
Okay, great. Yeah. All right.
I had a, a question at one point about whether we even needed this definition and, and I'm, I'm understanding from staff now that because there are places where we, where we use the word family in the zoning code, makes sense to me that we need to have this definition and I'm in support of it.
All right. Thank you.
I'm in support. I think it's a good evolution of the previous definition.
Mr. Hunt? Yeah, all good. All right.
I have nothing to add.
Great. Sounds good. I also find myself in support of it. With that then, I would like to request a roll call vote, please.
Motion?
Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah. Good idea. I would entertain a motion, please. Yes.
I'll move approval of resolution one, series twenty twenty-five, recommending to the city council approval of an ordinance amending Lewisville municipal code section seventeen point oh eight, point one fifty, family.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Roll call, please.
Krishna Bangs.
Aye.
Krishna Hunt.
Yes.
Krishna Choi.
Aye.
Krishna Moline.
Yes.
Krishna Basket.
Yes.
Krishna Mahaly.
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving into our second item of business, a zoning code amendment regarding accessory dwelling units. And I have to read it all over again. I will now open the public hearing on a request for a zoning code amendment regarding accessory dwelling units. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there'll be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from planning commission to staff. After this presentation, members of public who have joined the meeting in person, by computer, or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak in person is asked to complete a speaker card. Use the raise hand function if participating by computer or star nine if calling in by telephone. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Two people present at the meeting may pool their minutes to allow one person to speak for up to a total of six minutes. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will, the staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I'll then close the public hearing and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter, may approve, approve with conditions, deny, table, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and city of residence. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing no objections. Do we have notification?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Do we have any disclosures? Seeing none. I would invite you to.
Okay. Take it away. So Jeff Hurt with Community Development. So this is consideration of resolution two to allow accessory dwelling units and compliance with Colorado House Bill twenty-four eleven fifty-two. All noticing requirements have been met. We've also done enhanced noticing for this, recognizing the level of interest. So several thousand residents have been directly notified of this meeting and subsequent meetings in front of council. So we thought it was important to do that. So the topics in this presentation, about ten minutes are, one, what is an ADU, just sitting on the same page about what that even means. And then second, sort of the current state of ADUs in Lewisville, and then on to a summary of some of our recent ADU-related city policies, and then certainly the state law, that's the catalyst for a lot of this. And then I'll walk us through the proposed ordinance before getting into the discussion. So an ADU, I think many of us are familiar with the concept of an ADU, but it is an accessory unit to a primary unit, which means that it's subordinate both in size and sort of prominence from the street. And it takes a lot of different forms, right? So it can be in a basement. It can be in addition to a house. It can be a detached structure, a tiny house. It can be a unit above a garage. There's lots of different forms and ADU comes in. And here's just some images of different kinds of ADUs, some of these from our region. So ADUs are currently not allowed in Lewisville. We are an outlier in that sense. I think we're the only city in our kind of neck of the woods that does not allow them. So the closest thing that we have to allowing an ADU is what we call a guest house. So we do allow people to have sort of a separate sort of rooming unit, but it can't have a full kitchen. It can't be fully independent. You can't rent it out. That's about as far as you can go currently. So no ADU allowance on the books today. It is important also to recognize that we do not allow short-term rentals anywhere in the city, and that would not change with this. But we did explicitly clarify you cannot do a short-term rental in an ADU. I'll get to that. So it is important to note, we did some community engagement on ADUs in twenty twenty-three as part of the Marshall Fire rebuild. We asked residents specifically of those neighborhoods, their level of interest for doing an ADU or support for an ADU. And there was mixed support. We recognized at the time that we needed to have a bigger citywide conversation, so we sort of punted it a bit. But I think the bottom line is, and you'll learn here shortly, that the state law really overrides a lot of the questions that we asked as part of that survey anyway. We asked questions like, would you want an ADU? Would you want to allow an ADU? State law overrides a lot of those, those topics. So we did adopt, city council adopted the Lewisville Housing Plan last year. And so our official policy has three main goals. I won't read through them, but they are very much in support of this ADU ordinance. And there is also an explicit action item called out in the housing plan to address ADUs, recognizing that they can support housing affordability, housing choice, housing diversity in the community. So on to the Colorado, the new Colorado law. I'm not going to go through this in much detail. There's a fair amount of detail in your staff report. I'm happy to if you want to circle back to it. But that's sort of a higher level. Last year, the state adopted a law that requires all cities, including Lewisville, to allow ADUs on all single-family lots. So any lot that's zoned for single family or has a single-family unit, by law in Lewisville will have to be allowed to have an ADU. And that means you have to have the single-family unit first. You can't build the ADU first, obviously. And there's very detailed standards in the bill that essentially attempt to preclude any city from having overly restrictive standards to where it'd make it really difficult to build an ADU. So we had to comply with those. One important thing to note also, that ADUs must be allowed administratively. So what that means is you can't have like a discretionary process with a public hearing. You can't have like subjective standards that say like, you know, the design needs to be compatible with the neighborhood. It has to be very specific, objective, like metric type standards. The law does limit our ability to regulate anything to do with owner occupancy about the ADU and the primary unit. There's limitations around parking. So it is very detailed and we did, we are confident we're complying with the law and doing some additional Lewisville specific things. Our deadline for compliance is June of this year. So I'm going to walk the group through the, the draft ordinance and cover each of these topics kind of one by one. So first, in terms of the allowance. So the map on the screen, I know it's hard to read. It's, it's in your packet. We could blow it up. But this is a map showing all of the single-family areas of Lewisville where ADUs would need to be allowed. So the ordinance does reflect that, both for detached and attached ADUs, and of course, allowing them by right, per state law. There is an exception, an important exception. We are allowed to regulate ADUs based on historic preservation. So if, if an ADU or a portion of an ADU is eligible for being landmarked, we do have the ability as a city to take it through the historic preservation review process at Historic Preservation Commission. And that would be the case with this ordinance that, that would still, that would still apply. So the maximum size under the draft ordinance for an ADU is for a detached ADU. It's eight hundred square feet. For an attached ADU, it's a thousand square feet. And then we added in a two hundred square foot bonus for a couple of things that we consider community benefits that align with city policy related to landmarking and deed restricted affordable housing. And we don't know much that's going to be used, but we thought it'd be good to have that as an option. And these sizes, I'm happy to talk more about these specific sizes. And first, first of all, there, it's a common metric in other communities that have had ADU regulations for a while. Denver Boulder, for example, use these metrics. And ADUs have been slowly getting built in those communities. An eight hundred square foot unit would be able to fit like a two-bedroom, one-bath unit comfortably, for example. So as far as the maximum height, so there's kind of two buckets of height in the ordinance. There's the outside of Old Town and inside Old Town. So outside of Old Town, the draft ordinance treats an ADU just like any other accessory building, a shed or detached garage relative to height. It's twenty feet. The attached ADU heights would be the same as the primary buildings. If you wanted to put it in the basement or add on, it would be the same height under the draft ordinance. And it is important enough that we as a city can regulate the height of the ADU under the bill. So that is an option for us. And so in Old Town, and I'll talk about sort of the unique circumstances that led to this recommendation. We are proposing that detached ADUs would be allowed to go taller, up to twenty-five feet, and same for attached ADUs. And so the reason for the recommendation for the increased height in Old Town is there are several factors. First, there's a roof pitch requirement in Old Town. So basically that means is you have to slope your roof. That is not a requirement outside of Old Town. And it's pretty significantly limits the habitable area of a second floor with that roof pitch. And I think some architects could speak to that as well. The alley access in Old Town is also a unique feature in terms of having multiple points of access and more options for placement of the ADU. And then certainly in Old Town, the lots are generally narrower and smaller than the rest of the city, which makes it more difficult to find space. So going up a little bit more versus being able to go out. So as far as setbacks from ADUs from property lines, the proposed ordinance has detached ADUs again treated similar to other types of accessory buildings in terms of how, how far back it would be from property lines. The rear setback for attached ADUs is kind of quirky under the state law. And so this was one of the reasons for one of the addendums we sent out. So the state law actually says that you can't, for an attached ADU, and happy to drill into this more, for an attached ADU, you can't have a greater rear setback than the, than the, the greatest setback of an accessory building. So it's, it's kind of like, it took me a minute to get my head around that, but basically any detached garage or accessory building, whatever that setback is, rear setback, the attached portion of the ADU would have to, it can't be more restrictive than that. And then, so we also added in there that ADUs must be behind the front of the primary building. And some other key elements of the ordinance, and there's a lot to unpack under each of these if you want to go there. So for parking, the proposed ordinance basically goes to the maximum that the state law allows us to and addresses what would be a very, I think, pretty rare circumstance where there would be parking a lot required for the ADU only if there's no on-street parking on the subject block and there's not basically an excess parking space that the primary dwelling unit doesn't need. So it's a very narrow window of times when parking would be required, but that is the maximum allowed by this law. Regarding minimum lot size per dwelling unit, this also per state law, the ADU would be exempt from that requirement. So you can't have a minimum lot size per dwelling unit and have the ADU count toward it. It's exempt from that. It is important to note also that the, under the proposed ordinance, ADUs would be subject to lot coverage requirements. So the maximum percent of a lot that could be covered by a building, an ADU would be part of that calculation. So if you have a lot that's approaching that maximum, whether it's thirty percent or whatever, you could see some challenges for building an ADU. And that is something we can regulate if we wanted to. We did not propose that with this ordinance. And last couple of things, this first one's kind of a big one. So we've recognized that there are existing units in the community that may meet this future definition of an ADU that are currently in violation. Other communities have done this and we're proposing to have a grace period where property owners can come in and request that those get legal non-conforming status, meaning they're no longer in violation of the code, but they can remain as is. And so we've built in a process for that and happy to talk more about the details of what that would look like. And then the last element of the ordinance, we don't expect to be used very often, but essentially what this says is that any ADU, if an ADU is part of a larger development, say you have, you know, a twenty-unit development and folks wanted to put an ADU as part of that PUD, that, those ADUs would not count toward their inclusionary housing requirement. So we basically have a requirement that says any new residential has to have a certain percent set aside as deed restricted affordable. And under this proposal, the ADU wouldn't count toward that calculation. It would basically be exempt, sort of recognizing that by their nature, they're going to be naturally more affordable. They're smaller, they're ancillary. And so that's the proposal. Again, we don't expect it to be used very much, but we thought it'd be helpful to put that in there and aligns with city policy. And then the last thing I wanted to acknowledge was that there were a few addendums, which we don't like to do, but there were a few addendums this morning that went out to address clarifying things. The first thing regarding the rear setbacks I mentioned for the attached, that's just something that's really buried in the state law. And we wanted to make sure that was addressed. So that was an addendum. The second thing was just making sure all of our single-family zone districts say an ADU must be permitted to, and we had one that we missed. That was sort of an outlier in the code. And so that was added in. And then the last thing was the clarification about no short-term rentals would be allowed in ADUs, which would be the case even if we were silent on it, but we felt it was important to explicitly state that as part of this ordinance. So that concludes my presentation. I know it's a lot of information, but staff does recommend approval of resolution two to allow accessory dwelling units to comply with state law and implement housing plan goals and action items. So happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks. We'll open up for Commissioner questions. Commissioner Basket.
Thank you for the presentation. I am curious about two things that have been kind of swirling around. One is utility connections, water taps. Could you speak to that? And I'll tell you the second question because I think you can remember it. How duplexes relate in terms of ADUs? Can you have an ADU at a duplex?
So yeah, so first regarding the utility fees. So where the, the proposed ordinance is silent on that. We address utilities and I believe it's title twelve of the code in terms of tap fees and things like that. We are very aware that that's a big issue with ADUs. Tap fees are very expensive. And so we're working with our public works staff to figure out a way to get that fee potentially lower for ADUs. We don't have resolution for that tonight, and I don't believe that would live in this title seventeen. But we are working on that in recognition of one, first, most communities require that the ADU be on the same utility as the main unit. So that's one, that's one component that we're looking at. The other one is the tap fee itself. So currently, we don't have a line item for an ADU specifically. And so we're working with Public Works because it's a pretty hefty fee to see if we can potentially have more flexibility there.
So we, but we don't have any requirements for or against it being separately metered?
Not under the proposed ordinance, no.
Okay. Please, yeah, if we could follow on on this issue.
Just to follow on that, you know, taps are assigned per the assigned address for the locations. What is staff contemplating right now in terms of if there is a requirement for a separate utility tap for water or electricity? Is that also going to require a separate assigned address for an ADU?
It's a good question. I think, I think we would want to have a secondary address, yeah, for sure, for emergency access and for those purposes. But we haven't thought through yet how that would relate to the tap fee separation, though.
Okay. But has there been a contemplation about what a separate addressing?
So I, but I think one of the questions, sorry to interrupt, is whether there's a separate physical tap? Was that one of your questions?
Yes.
Because I, I think the direction we're going is that that would not be required.
Okay.
So I think the issue, the issue that is outstanding is the fee, but they would be on the same, they'd be on the same tap.
But if they're on the same, why would there, why would it trigger a fee?
So.
When it's just an extension of the current service?
Right. So the, the, the reason is, is that as you bring in additional people living in the city, additional density, they're using water and sewer services. And so there is a question about an equitable share of the cost of those facilities. So that would be the philosophy behind having some fee for a new unit.
But I just, what was, what was not clear to me from the ordinance, and I think you've answered it, but I want to be sure, is that you're not contemplating requiring separate utilities for these ADUs. They would be on the utilities of the primary dwelling.
That's the direction that we're headed and why we kept the ordinance the way it is, to, to not require separate.
You said some cities do actually require that it be included, that it's not allowed to be separate?
Correct. Yeah. It has to be the same. Some, some, I think we looked at eight different cities. Most of them say it has to be on the same. A couple of them say it's the city's discretion to separate them.
The city's discretion or the homeowner's discretion?
The city's, like the director of public works or something like that. The cities, like the Director of Public Works or something like that. The other cities do, yeah.
So just to clarify, has staff contemplated, back to the addressing question, has staff contemplated any protocol or process for, you know, sub-address for an ADU, whether it's in Old Town or outside of Old Town?
Yeah, they'll have to have a separate address.
So is it like 1135B?
Well, we haven't gotten into that level of detail. I think, well, we haven't come up with an addressing policy. That'd probably be a policy-level decision. Once this ordinance goes into effect, we'll come up with a protocol for how we address the units. We'll probably, we'll run it through the fire district and our police department, probably with county dispatch, make sure they're in agreement with the protocol we come up with.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe the postal service, if we have one.
So make sure I'm understanding this right, and it's clearing the record. So as, as currently written, if this passes, when an owner goes to set up an ADU, that owner would have the choice of having utilities included in the same address or separating it out separately? It seems like there's a choice here. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, and something we're very mindful of and working on to get a resolution before city council, frankly. And so, currently, the way it's written, it would require, Public Works would have to look at it. We don't have a specific policy, but it would require a separate tap fee. But that's what we're working on, getting more flexibility on.
And I'm assuming the tap fee is related to the number of outlets in the existing property?
Yeah, it's, it's complicated, and we're educating ourselves on this, or I am at least, but we have a fixture count per property, basically threshold, and so, I think it's 30. There's a trigger at 30. Like a typical, you know, 2,000-square-foot house has like 15 to 20 fixtures, I've understood. Once you get up to 30, it triggers a larger tap size. And so, that's the, that's the concern right there, is that trigger?
And that's my...
So we're working with Public Works about that right now.
Yeah, so when a, when a larger, if it's a, if it's an attached unit versus a detached, and, you know, are you tapping separately? You know, in that case, if you're already above the 30, which would otherwise require a large tap, you know, that, that's, you know, that could go a lot of different ways, and it's pretty complicated.
Yeah. I mean, it, it's admittedly a key issue. We also wanted to keep this moving forward and be able to take action. Not saying we would come back with changes necessarily, but some of those could be addressed at city council or through another title in the, in the code, but we're very mindful of it. And, but we didn't want to, it's been, it's been a long process, because it's a very complicated kind of world that, you know, only a select number of people really know really well. So we wanted to keep this moving forward and address that as soon as possible, though.
Commissioner Troy.
So, I actually have a question about something that maybe related to what you just said. You said only a select few number of people are kind of familiar with this topic. In the staff report, you, or in the staff report, it is mentioned that the city anticipates maybe 10 ADUs in the next few years, kind of based on an extrapolation from nearby communities, I think Superior and Boulder were mentioned, that have allowed ADUs prior to the House Bill being approved.
Yeah, and there's just not good data on that, really. So it's a huge guess. That number, I think that number comes from, the only study we've been able to find, looked at communities that have allowed ADUs for a few years, basically how many ADUs have been built per, per thousand housing units? And it ranged from like .5 to two in Boulder per thousand. And so, all, that's all that number is, really, is based on that. And it doesn't, that's just for new ADUs. That wouldn't account for existing ones. So it's, it's a big guess, unfortunately.
Were any of those data presented in, in a way that they indicated kind of a linear growth, or was it an exponential growth, or was it just such a limited dataset you couldn't tell?
It was, it's not good, and I don't think, I don't think there was any sort of spikes or anything. I think it was pretty, yeah.
Thanks.
Sure.
Well, okay. I'm interested in the, the answer to Commissioner Basket's question about duplexes, and maybe I'll also just throw in other, like multifamily parcels, just single lot, yeah.
Yeah, so the proposed ordinance, you would only be allowed an ADU for a single-family unit, so a duplex would not, you would not be able to have like a third unit on the property as it stands today, yeah.
Even if it's attached? Even, or, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, still be an ADU, attached or detached.
But it wouldn't be allowed on anything that's a duplex?
Because there's a duplex there, because, yeah. The way it's written, no.
Yeah. And so, just a little clarification, too. The, the state law only applies to single-family detached, so we're required to have an ordinance for those. It's optional, if we want, as a city, to allow duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. If we wanted to allow ADUs in those, the state doesn't mandate we do that. The staff proposal doesn't include that, but if planning commission wanted to expand the allowance past staff's proposal, we, you could give us that feedback.
Could, could you explain it, I mean, is there like a justification or reason why you wanted to limit that?
Right. So I would say that once you, and I'm just saying, like, this would probably be the philosophy. This staff's not advocating for this one way or another. It's kind of an open question. But when you're building to a duplex, triplex, quadplex density, you're already having a little bit of density in there. And so, I think it's a community character question of, do you want to continue to add density in those medium-density areas? I don't think there's a wrong or right answer to that. It just adds more density in an area where you're already more dense than a single-family neighborhood typically. So if that's, it does add more housing options, adds more housing choice. I think it's just a community question of how far they want to go with this ordinance.
So, there was a recent proposal that included townhomes that the proponent had proposed that the lower level could, in theory, be like garden-level ADUs.
This ordinance would not allow that. So if you wanted to allow that as an example in that project, you'd, you'd want to make that recommendation through this process tonight.
Something to think about?
Yep.
Yeah, maybe one more. We got some public feedback about minimum sizes for ADUs. Could you, would you be willing to comment? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good clarification. There is no minimum size in the ordinance, and we did check with our building official. There actually, there's no minimum, there's a minimum sort of livable area in occupancy standards, but there's no minimum square footage for a unit. So conceivably, you could build a 250, 300-square-foot unit. There's nothing preventing you from doing that. I think what the person was talking about was in the state law, there was something about that, but, yeah, it's a good question.
I thought there was a mention of 500-square-foot minimum in the packet. Was that the state requirement?
That's the state requirement, yeah, yeah. We have to allow ADUs between 500 and 750 square feet.
Okay. So we have no minimum?
We have no minimum, yeah.
Commissioner Haley.
So I want to talk about occupancy limits, and my understanding is there aren't occupancy limits in terms of the number of personnel and people in an ADU. And I'm coming at this, and I'll save my comments for the discussion period, but I'm coming from a, you know, trying to think about this systematically and thinking about population density in the extreme cases where we may have collections or pockets and what that might mean for the rest of the system. So do we have anything in here? My understanding is no. I just wanted to clarify. Is there anything in here regarding occupancy?
No, because we can't, under the, under the bill. And Robyn, I think you...
Yeah, so it's going to go to the building code. We actually, I actually closed it. I could bring it back up again. So the building code's going to determine occupancy, and it's going to be based, it, there's a minimum area, living area, and then, there's a minimum bedroom area per person. So I think it's 70 square feet for one person, and then, every additional person in a bedroom, it's 50 square feet, as an example. So if you add a two-bedroom ADU with 120 square feet per bedroom, that's four people that could live in that ADU potentially.
For the building code, yeah.
But you can't go above that.
Because my, yeah, my, because my understanding was, as written in the state law, it just points to the building code and the building code, which is what I think...
That would be the building code standard, yeah.
So there is an inherent occupancy limit based on the building code?
On the building code, yeah. You can't have 10 people in an ADU with two bedrooms.
And that's what I'm getting at, yeah. So, okay.
I have an additional occupancy question, then. So I'm assuming we're not here to establish a policy on who can live in which unit. So for example, I believe in the city of Boulder, if, if the primary or the principal property is a rental, and you add an ADU, the owner needs to reside in either the ADU or the principal residence?
Yeah, that's another example of state law. The state law basically says we can't require the owner to live either in the ADU or the primary unit.
We cannot.
There's a, there's a very limited window, I should clarify. There's a very limited window in the bill that says that we can require that the owner occupy the primary unit at the time of the permit for the ADU, but that's it, yeah. But we didn't propose including that as part of this, because it's so narrow, but open to that.
Yeah, it's on a table, and I was going to ask about that. It's on a table, and I think it's page 27 of the document, but it just says, "except at the time of the permit for the ADU." So if you're selling the home, obviously, it doesn't apply, but does that then, de facto, mean that it automatically applies to the current owner?
I'm going to understand your question.
So you, you, you own a home that you don't live in, right? But it says, "except at the time of the permit being issued." So if you're, the example he gave, right, you still own the home, but you don't live in it. But as, as written by the state law, at least as I interpret it, it requires property owner occupancy of the ADU, except at the time of the permit. So is, is there, I mean, it, it seems like a key point.
But we're not, they're not including that in our ordinance.
Okay. So, so we, so we get around that?
Well, we're silent, we're silent on it to where, I mean, obviously, anybody who pulls a permit has to have property owner authorization to pull the permit. It's just a matter of, do they live there or not? And we did not propose, we stayed silent on that, proposed staying silent on that.
But, I mean, maybe we can save this for the, the discussion later. I'm sure a lot of residents will be interested to understand. So if there's a rental property on a lot today, and the owner of that rental property chooses to add an ADU, you could have two rental properties on the same lot, even though the owner doesn't reside at the time of the permit in the primary property.
That's correct, but you, but, so, and we're open to the, if we want to entertain the, to do the state law thing. But it could change hands pretty quickly right after the permit, too, so.
Yeah, just to be, I think that's the clarification. We could require that, but then, the owner could, once the permit is issued, the owner can move out, and the state law doesn't require, so then, you have a rental, two rentals on the property anyways. So there's a huge...
It made my head spin thinking of different scenarios, but ultimately, it was like, it seemed very right for gaming, so.
Speaking of which, I got another question for you. What's the difference between an addition and an ADU? So I build an ADU, but I don't rent it out. I just live in it. It's an addition to my house. Is there any unintended consequences, anything we should think about?
I can't think of a scenario, I mean, if, if it's a separate unit and separately addressed...
If it's at, if I build an attached ADU per this, then I just never...
It could come, I mean, just thinking aloud here, it could come in and out of compliance or definition of an ADU. If you decide you just want to make that all one big living area, we would no longer consider it an ADU. But if you decide to break it up, pull a permit that shows it's 800 square feet, then it becomes an ADU. So both are legal.
I, I, I had a question that maybe is associated with what you're trying to ask. So, and this might touch more on the policy side of things. When additions are, you know, permitted, designed, constructed, homeowners pay an additional fee for, say, adding a bedroom, right? Because it adds to the occupancy count of, of the city. I can see a scenario where, where a homeowner might say, oh, I'm just building an addition, it's not getting a separate address, but it's adding two more bedrooms and, you know, kitchen and things above my garage, and then, at some other point, come back and say, hey, I'd like this to be recognized as an ADU. Is there, is there a difference in what staff is considering in, in terms of some of those kind of permit activities related to recognizing another, you know, occupant of the city and the load that that has on city infrastructure and those associated fees and those types of things?
Right. So we have development impact fees for transportation and recreation and parks and trails, and that's based on square footage. So we're anticipating that those would still apply to the whole property. So if you're adding an attached or detached ADU, and you go above a certain threshold to put you up into a new category, and you might be subject to those expansion fees.
And that would apply whether it's an ADU or an addition?
It would matter if it's an ADU or building addition. Either way, we got rid of the, we used to do it by bedroom, and our most recent version of our development impact fees, we go by square footage instead of bedroom.
Commissioner Haley.
So getting into that, is it, how does, how would this work? Is it, is it the kitchen that makes it an ADU? Right? Like, people have plenty of extra bathrooms in the home and bedrooms.
So it would have to be a fully-contained living unit. So it would have to have, it would have to have, you know, a bathroom, cooking facilities, and a sleeping area, yep.
Separate entrance.
And a separate, and a separate entrance, likely, yes.
So is it really, so is there any difference to, my understanding...
I don't know that it has to have a separate entrance, actually.
It's not written as a rule?
Yeah, so I don't, so, scratch the separate entrance, but it has to be a self-contained living unit.
And so, given existing buildings, is the, is the, because, you know, again, most buildings have extra living space, right?
Yep.
So is it really the addition of a kitchen that makes it that extra self-contained? How are we designing self, you know, if we're not including entrances or exits, and I have a question about fire code as well in a second, but if we're not including entrances or exits as separate entities to have it be an ADU, is it really the kitchen that triggers this whole administrative response of...
So if somebody could put a second kitchen in their house, and it doesn't make it an ADU necessarily, under our, the way our codes are written, if somebody intends to create a second unit and rent it out, then that's when it becomes an ADU, and that's when we're going to regulate it under this ordinance.
So if, so if rent money is exchanging hands, that's when the regulation steps in?
Right, and you can have an ADU that you don't rent, but, so it's, it's not quite as clear as that. But if somebody intends to have a second living unit and, and wants to have that ability to use it separately, then they would have to go through the ADU permitting process with us. We would recognize it as a separate dwelling unit. Now, people could do all kinds of renovations within their existing house that include cooking facilities and other things. That doesn't create a second dwelling unit. They don't have the right to have, you know, other people living there and, and rent to them as a separate dwelling unit.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll save some of the other comments for discussion, but one last clarifying question. So my understanding from reading the packet is that there isn't any change in, in fire code or anything. It's, you're, you're just extending the existing building code of that single-family unit. That then just applies to the additional structure. There's no change in allowances or anything like that?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for staff at this time?
Just one more question. So, working through the idea of, you know, the change to the code, ADUs would be allowed, ADUs get designed, permitted, constructed, is the intention of this, through its definition, would it allow future additions, modifications, or alterations to the ADUs?
If they stay within the limitations, yeah. I mean, so if someone built a 500-square-foot detached ADU, they could build, and 800 was the max, they could build 300 square foot onto that, for example, yeah.
Interesting, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Basket.
Another topic that I won't be surprised if it comes up this evening is parking. So if I understand the ordinance as written, if you can park on the street, you're not required to provide an additional parking space.
Correct.
Do we have any streets in Louisville where we don't allow parking?
The only ones I could think of are like private drives, but I don't know how that would fit into, I, I don't, I can't think of any. It was hard for me to think of a scenario where parking would be required.
But that's something that is state law, right? We don't, you don't have flexibility there.
That's the, that's the most rigid we could be on parking, is what's in there, yeah.
All right, any additional questions? Seeing none, I'd like to open it up for public comment. If you're here in person and you'd like to speak, could you make sure you fill out a speaker card, which are available on the table outside of the door there? We've got a couple already. Please limit yourself to three minutes, and if you begin with your name and city of residence, as we call up the first person, could I have a motion to add the addendum with public comments to the record?
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see. Thank you. Let's see. Mr. Deister, did you want to speak on this one? Got your card here, so.
So I'm Justin Deister again with, and I've been living here in Lewisville for 35 years and just, I've always loved my little town, but I, so I'm, I'm, I'm a little surprised that we're proposing such a, such a thing here to increase the density of our, of our living space. I don't have any specific little thing, but you spoke of philosophy of this all happening. I don't know what the philosophy is. To, to increase the density of our living spaces, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. You can think it might have something to do with increasing affordable housing or something, but affordable housing is kind of, I don't know, it's kind of like a myth. It doesn't really exist. I mean, housing costs so much, I don't know what is affordable and who affords it. So the definition of affordable housing is kind of vague. But so, I don't have anything planned. I, I just wanted to say, I, I don't, I don't really know what the purpose of this proposal is. Is it to, is it to squeeze more people into the same space? And why? Why do we want to do that? So I'm opposed to this in any fashion, in any fashion. I don't know who's dreaming this up, you know, it's, it's some kind of city planner kind of thing, but it, but it, but on the real level with people living in a home. I live in Dutch Creek, and it's a small, small community. If we put, if we doubled the number of people there and we doubled the number of structures and whatnot, and we doubled all the parking on the street, we'd have a real mess. And, and that kind of density increases, you know, people's stress levels and so forth, and I think you'd have a mess. It wouldn't be the same Lewisville that I've, that I've always known it to be. Thanks.
Thank you. Matt Machado will be next. For people online, please do use the raise hand function or star nine. After Mr. Machado, Mary Ann Haney will be next.
Hi, thank you. Matt Machado, I live at 501 Jefferson in Lewisville. Few points on the, the fees and, and the services for like using extra water and sewer. I know about the sewer, but on the water side, assuming the city has tiers, and, and there's a base rate and some amount is covered by that. So consider whether the tiers would be, generate, or, or cover that, cover that additional burden that's placed on the city system. If you're underneath that, that base rate, if you're in that tier one, then you're probably not putting any additional burden on the, on the system. That's why, and you, and you, obviously you're not increasing the amount of irrigated acreage. You're probably reducing the amount of irrigated acreage in most, or irrigated square footage in most instances. That's one thing. Number two, on the, on the rentals, I do see, you know, potential problem there with increasing density on rentals, and there are a lot of rentals in Lewisville. I encourage you maybe, and I'm not, I haven't considered all the pros and cons of this, but it seems like there could be a problem there. There might be some wiggle room in the statute over this, that the owner has to reside at the time of the application for an ADU to consider how to enforce the reside portion. You know, if there was an existing lease, for example, on the house, maybe that's evidence that they don't reside there. If they're, if the owner has a different residence, if, if Lewisville's not their place of actual residence, maybe that is complies with the statute, and you could get it that, that way to hold, yeah, maybe it reduces the number of ADUs with rentals, if that's a goal of the commission or the city. Third, I have an ADU on my property. I moved in there a year ago. It was, it was constructed in 2015. They put a second story on the garage. It has a flat roof. It's in Old Town. It, it was absolutely permitted. It's, it complies. It wasn't built as a, I, I don't know why it has a flat roof, but what I don't see in here is a variance policy. We have the non-conforming issue here. My garage is not non-conforming. It would be non-conforming as an ADU. But, sorry, the second floor of the garage is like the, maybe the best ADU in, in Lewisville. Because there's parking, it's, it's, it's in a great location for everything. So I don't see a variance in here, and I don't know, I, it would be really a tragedy if I have to rip off a 10-year-old roof just to put on a peaked roof there, because that's what's necessary for an ADU. Maybe I'm reading it wrong, but that seems to be like a, if, if that's, if that's the case, if I would have to rip off the roof of this pretty new structure, 10 years old, to, to get approval, that would be. I'd like this ordinance to address that somehow.
Great, thank you very much. Ms. Haney, Haney? Mary Ann Haney? Yeah.
Close one.
And then after that, Gary and Dunlap and Jennifer Arante. And then we'll jump online in between there two, actually. Thank you, please.
Hi, Mary Ann Haney. I live in Old Town, and I just have a few comments. You know, in 2021, there was a study done, and Old Town doesn't conform to lot sizes and setbacks and all kinds of things. So I'd like maybe a little bit more attention to how these ADUs are going to be situated in people's yards in Old Town, particularly when a lot of the yards are small. So maybe that's something we could put into this regulation. Another thing is parking, where there's no street parking. There's not a lot of street parking in Old Town, and in many cases, there is no street parking just from all the residents that are already there. You know, people don't have driveways, they don't have garages. And so I think that definition is way too broad to provide protection for everyone that needs to park, particularly if you're talking about ADUs that might house four people. So that's four more cars in an area where it's already full. And if you're thinking about parking off the alley, that's great, but we're going to need a lot more alley maintenance, because a lot of them, I don't think are going to hold up with the increased traffic. There's a lot of current, what would be considered ADUs already. There's attics, there's basements, there's garages that have been converted. There's second-story garages, there's outbuildings. And I wonder if you can address those a little bit more definitively on how the transition's going to be made and what the regulations are for those ADUs that already exist, because again, it, it seems a little broad at this point. And then I would strongly support long-term rentals only. I think the idea of this is to increase housing for people, and short-term rentals do not increase housing. They allow people to come in on a transient basis and stay in Lewisville, which is fine. But if we want to comply with the intent of the ordinance, I think we ought to have a long-term residence consideration with perhaps a short-term rental variance that's available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, why don't we jump online? There's somebody with the phone number, it's 6224. If we can unmute them initially. What does that mean? Now there's a line that says, no telephone? Okay.
My question is about the setbacks. Do you grandfather it in? You know, if you already have a structure there, you know, you don't have to have. Because buildings in Old Town, the structures are right on the property line in my neighborhood, from your neighbors. And so that's, I would, would think you'd want to grandfather in a detached garage and not have, to have a, you know, variance from that property line.
Great, thank you. Can we get your last name for the record, please?
Yeah, Marribable, D-I-B-B-L-E.
Thank you. Appreciate your participation. Moving over, Gary, can we welcome you up? Dunlap.
How do I unmute now?
I'm Gary Dunlap. I live in Lewisville. I, I had sent in some written comments, so I won't cover those again. The, there was a, the terminology of this proposal uses square footage, where the municipal code uses lot coverage and floor area. I, I'm pretty sure when you say square footage, you mean lot coverage. But if you don't make that clear, then, you know, doing the calculations doesn't make much sense. And then beyond that, the 800 square feet, whether it's a lot coverage or floor area, is pretty small compared to what a lot of the parts of the country are doing. In other, in California, I, I've just looked at some things online. It's, it's more common to have 800 square foot for one bedroom, but if you're able to add two bedrooms, you know, increase housing density, maybe 1,000 square feet is, is more appropriate. The, the idea is to have more affordable housing for people, and I think it's all a good idea. We do have baristas, we have restaurant workers, we have really teachers who can't afford to live in Lewisville. And it's, if there's a way for them not to have to commute to Commerce City, I think that that's good for all of us. I, I guess that's the main thing. I think really that connection to utilities issue is, is big enough that should be resolved before that goes to city council. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Jennifer Arante. Welcome up.
Yeah, hi, Jennifer Arante. I live in Lewisville, and I was just curious as, to piggyback on the online question about setbacks being grandfathered in, also square footage being grandfathered in. And then I guess I don't understand the process. At what point will we hear answers to these questions?
So in, in general, we're going to discuss this quite a bit afterwards, and some of your answers may come up. If not, you can bring them to city council as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I would just add, they can reach out to city staff as well with those clarifying questions in between the processes, and we can explain what the code addresses and doesn't, if, if it doesn't get addressed tonight. Yes.
Thank you. And online, we have a Betty Solak. There we go, you should be unmuted now. You're unmuted at this end. You, you may have to unmute your microphone. Okay, we'll, we'll try again in just a minute here. In the meantime, I'll invite MJ Adams, please.
Great. This is MJ Adams. I live in Old Town. Enter, and I think I'm really pleased to see that Lewisville is moving forward in considering the adoption of the ADU regulations. I think it's a really important housing type. I think you can tuck housing units in neighborhoods and in backyards with a very soft increase in density, and we really need the housing units. And yes, ADUs typically are more affordable than other units might be, new units might be to create. And I think they're a really important housing type, especially as we look at families trying to flex around either having adult children who are compelled to live at home because of the housing costs here in the region, or needing to have an elder parent move, move close by. So I think it provides a really interesting and important addition to the, the housing stock here in Erie. And I'm also particularly pleased that you're looking at finding a, or giving a pathway to the existing ADUs in town to become legitimate, because they, they are a very important piece of the housing stock. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Betty Solak, we're going to attempt your microphone again here. So you're unmuted on our end. You may be muted on your own computer. But we're not hearing anything from you, unfortunately. Oops, on off. So I, I see the red line now on our side. It was, you, anything now? Okay, unfortunately. We will move on then to the next raised hand, Michael Perkins. Just a moment here.
Okay.
You hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I missed some of the presentation, and I wanted some clarification around fees and stuff, especially if we're considering converting part of our home that has, you know, two bedroom or three bedrooms into two bedrooms and a living room and stuff like that. It shares the same sewer and water and stuff like that, and I don't understand why there would be a separate fee or, or an increase in utilities if it's just my wife and I. And you normally measure the, the, the fee for sewer by water usage during the winter, and shouldn't that already take care of any additional fees around usage of sewer and, and, and other things like that? That's my question.
Great, thank you very much. I think, is there anybody else in the room who wanted to speak? All right, if you can bring your card up.
My name's Andy Johnson. I am Lewisville resident and business owner, and also local registered architect in Colorado. First of all, thank you, staff, for a great presentation. As you guys know, this is a state-required ordinance. There's a lot of things that we can't discuss because we're going to pass it. There's a lot of things that we can discuss because they're important to discuss. First, whether you agree if ADUs comply with the 12% requirement for inclusionary housing ordinance or not. It's probably better that we put that into the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Amendment and keep that as part of that discussion and not double-dip into this ordinance in terms of its compliance with inclusionary housing. I think there's a broader discussion to, to be had on that topic. As an architect that has practiced in this area for 25 years, living and working with my office for 20 years in Old Town, we have done probably one a year. If I were to count all the ones that we have done that could qualify as an ADU, however, it is always disheartening to tell my clients that I cannot do an ADU for you. The distinguishing factor is a kitchen when it comes to a detached living unit that has all the living components. Whether it's a bedroom as a studio, living area, kitchenette, separate bathroom. It's that kitchen component that is really distinguishing factor, and we have gone so far as to have everything but maybe a cooktop or a range, and that, that is the distinguishing factor. I think that these are buildings that are within our DNA now that many are not aware of and have virtually no impact. We are regulated by an Old Town floor area ratio and lot coverage. And those will not change unless we change our zoning code. So when we add additional square footage to our properties, we still have to comply, so we're not really creating dense building structures. However, for single-level and accessible units, I think that there is, should be an allowance for an additional percentage, maybe up to 10% would be my recommendation. Because those require larger lot coverage areas. And for accessible units, they tend to need a little more space around them to, to really work well. I wrote a letter that had a much more detailed analysis in terms of recommendations. I hope you had a chance to read it. Regarding size, height, address, these are not consequential things. They're all very well laid out with the staff presentation and report. And then one last thing, I know I'm over. We talk about grandfathering. I know this is a separate topic. Grandfathering is not in the ordinance or in our municipal code. That is not a term that we get to use. We either comply or We either comply or we don't. So when we talk about whether or not an existing structure complies, we judge it based on the current code. And there are circumstances where it still is legal nonconforming, but those are other definitions that staff is very well suited to answer, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that then, no additional public comment from within the room? Ms. Solak, we've attempted to include you. It hasn't worked. I'm not quite sure what the issue is, but we'll move on then, unfortunately. Can I ask staff then to, for a response, closing statement?
I don't have a specific closing statement prepared, but the one kind of theme of the public comment was regarding the existing units coming into compliance. I did a really brief overview of that component of the ordinance, so maybe elaborating a bit for folks. So essentially, yeah, okay, so essentially the way the ordinance is written, there would be about a year and a half grace period, and we would do some communications to let folks know about it, where anyone that has a unit that would meet the definition of an ADU, right, so it's independent, full kitchen, all that, but maybe it's too close to the property line, maybe it's a little too tall, maybe the roof is flat, in Old Town, whatever the case may be, there would be a process where they would come to the city and request a life safety inspection of the unit, just to make sure that it's livable. In our process, most of this is codified, a lot of it will be sort of internal workflow kind of stuff, but we would go out and do an inspection, but the intent is to have a lot of flexibility to bring those units into full compliance, so they're considered legal nonconforming, meaning that they're not in violation of the code, they can make some modest improvements to the unit, not much room for expansion, but they wouldn't be in violation like they currently are today technically. So we hope at that process, there's enough flexibility for folks like that we heard to address those units. And if there's any other common themes that...
Yeah, I think if any commissioners want to raise any issues, you'd like to hear more from staff on...
Yeah, so I have another question about parking. So I'm reading, you know, page 27 of the packet, and it says, "The city may not," and so there's three bullet points, but I'm only gonna read the first one. So, "The city may not, quote, 'require parking designated for the ADU except for instances where zoning regulations already require parking for the primary unit.'" So, in our zoning regulations, aren't there requirements for parking for the primary unit? And how is that, you know, I'm sure it's different for Old Town versus outside of Old Town, but what are the zoning regulations for parking for a primary unit?
Yeah, each unit is required to have two parking spaces. That's written like that, in part just to explicitly acknowledge that, but also in the instance, which I can't think of an example, where there's a PUD or some special sort of area-specific regulation, maybe that is different than that. So basically, if there's a, you can't, if there's a space there, so if you're required to have two parking spaces for a unit, and you have a third space there, and you have no on-street parking on the subject block, then that ADU would have to use that, could use that space. You can't make the primary unit dip below so it doesn't have parking.
So, but no on-street parking doesn't recognize the fact that there may be no available on-street park?
Yeah. No, yeah, it would just be like signage, right, that says, like explicitly, you cannot park here, not...
Block is typically parked out.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. It would be really tough to regulate.
So as, sorry, so as written in the state regulation, does that mean all three of those, so there's three bullet points, one that I just read, another one where there's no existing parking, and the third one is where, like you said, there's no, there's prohibited to have on-street parking. So do all three of those conditions have to be met for us to require parking?
No on-street parking, no available parking space, and then what was the third one, sir?
You're requiring, because we currently have in our zoning regulations...
Oh, yes, yeah, that unit was required to have said parking space, that you're...
So you can only require, so if I'm reading this right, I just wanna make sure that we're clear there, also for public record, that you can't require parking unless all three of those conditions are met?
Correct, yeah, yeah. And we could write the ordinance clearer than that, but that's what it is, which is a very narrow set of circumstances, yes.
Okay, understood, thank you.
So can we play that scenario out? So one of the questions that was raised in public comment, let's, grandfathering in, for example, an existing garage structure that, in theory, accommodates the parking requirement of the primary residence. If that person wanted to convert that garage to an ADU, you've essentially eliminated parking. What would the requirement be at that point?
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, so that wouldn't be allowed, because you have to maintain two, under our zoning code, you have to maintain two parking spaces for the primary, single-family dwelling unit, so you can't eliminate those to get your ADU. So you'd have to address that.
So, not to get too down in a rat hole, so if someone did convert their two-car garage right on the alley access, and then they said, okay, I'll forego some of my yard to accommodate two vehicles, is that allowable?
You could do that, yeah.
I could just see a lot of yards ending up with a lot of car parking space as a garage gets converted to an ADU.
It's a possibility, yeah.
Okay. Just based on a lot of the comment we've heard this evening, I anticipate a lot of existing garages may become ADUs quite quickly, which further exacerbates the parking problem.
I do believe that our municipal code requires improvements for it to be considered an allowable parking space, maybe?
Yeah, you have to have an improved surface, but you could...
Yeah, you can't just be parking on grass.
Sure, but they could, even worse, now we've got concrete driveways where there was once grass.
Right, but, and then to be clear, though, there's nothing we can do about that, because of state law.
Yeah, it's a concern, it's a very specific, it's not something we would have necessarily written, it's just something we would, it's the maximum we can do, but it does play to some of those scenarios, you're right.
I have a separate question, I missed it earlier, and I was looking for the exact
verbiage. So in the proposed language for the amendment, there's reference to detached accessory dwelling unit shall comply with, comply with all applicable development standards for accessory structures and uses set forth. There was a question earlier about kind of the size and area that would be required for a number of bedrooms, and Director Zakhar, you said that it would have to comply with IBC. What are the standards that would be required for ADUs related to things like, you know, energy efficiency assemblies, you know, installations, overall kind of other building components that primary residents, single-family residents have to comply with IBC, but accessory structures like garden sheds don't?
It'd be the same, it'd be the same requirements as a residential unit, the ADU.
Okay.
There are some tiny home codes, I don't know, that's a great question, I don't know exactly the answer to that question, but I think if it's, right now, you'd have to meet our energy code for site-built ADU. There might be some exceptions for production-built homes, or tiny homes, or things like that that I'm not sure about, but if it's site-built, you'd have to meet the energy code, I believe.
Okay, do you feel like the amendment to the code, as it's written right now, supports that sentiment?
I don't, I mean, I don't know why it would, and it's clearly defined as a residential dwelling unit, and so therefore it should be subject to all of those, but we can certainly clarify that and double-check, but...
Okay.
Commissioner Troy, is the language you're talking about, the language saying that how the setbacks and everything have to comply, do this have the same standards as accessory units?
It's not necessarily clear, which is, I think, why I'm asking the question. It doesn't, it's not specifically talking about the setback section. It's, I'm looking at the page one of seven of the proposed language in the ordinance, under accessory dwelling unit development standards, where it talks about development standards for accessory structures shall apply, not the section referring to setbacks.
Yeah, yeah, I understand your question, I think, now, and it is confusing. So development standards are, yeah, like setbacks and height and things like that. So that's, it's not any reference to a building code there. I think what you were getting at was, are we saying that, you know, what are we saying exactly with development standards? Is it related to building code or not? It's not related to building codes.
Okay.
Can I clarify one of the public comment questions? I think there was a question raised about square footage as opposed to lot coverage. So I think, I understand it to be, the structure would be 800 square feet max, but if someone has an extraordinarily large lot, we're saying it's 800 square feet max, regardless of proportion of lot coverage.
Yeah, it is also confusing, it is two distinct kind of metrics, so 800 square feet is 800 square feet, right, but the lot coverage just sort of supersedes all of it, right? So if you have a lot, and you have 30% is the maximum you can cover with a building, and you're, if you're at 25% now, or if you're at 30% now, you can't go over it regardless if it's 800 or 200 or whatever it is, yeah. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that would get at whether you had a one-story or a two, a one-story or a two-story, go up or out, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah, and it's a...
You could have a, you could have a 800 square foot that meets, you know, whatever your lot coverage is, it's two stories, but it might not meet it if it was one story.
Exactly, it could be a 400 square foot, like, footprint for the purposes of lot coverage, and then you go up to, yeah, visually be better to...
So speaking of lot coverage, I think one of the public comments was about single-story ADUs and potentially allowing an additional 10% for accessibility reasons. Does the city staff have an opinion?
We're open to it, I mean, we have a policy directive by city council to support and facilitate ADUs, and so our proposal is mostly to align with state law, with some modest kind of Lewisville-specific tweaks. That's not one of them we proposed, but we'd be open to that if planning commission wanted to discuss that, recognizing that could be a barrier.
Yeah, I'm curious about that, is if there's any universal design requirements that could be referred to within that?
If, if there were universal design components, those might be exempt?
That would trigger that allowance, perhaps.
Trigger the ability to go above the lot coverage for ramps and things of that nature?
Not lot coverage, just total square footage.
Oh, okay. That's not in the, we're open to that?
Yeah.
And if I could, while we're on this sort of similar topic, we heard, we got a little testimony too about why 800 and 1,000, and why not allowing more, and I'm just curious where the staff recommendation came from on that.
Yeah, you know, and again, reminder, this is our, this is, we've never allowed ADUs, right, of course, this is our first foray into this world, so it's a modest, I mean, I guess in our eyes, a modest proposal to barely go above the state minimum. We did, we did want to make sure that, you know, 800 square feet was reasonable for like a two-bedroom unit, for example, so you could have like a small family or something. So, and then we have those modest increases if you landmark or, you know, for affordable housing, but, but yeah, it's admittedly, you know, just above the state, but, and also a common metric in other communities that have started to see these built under these rules too.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Baskit?
I don't know if this is appropriate in this part of the conversation, but I'll put it out there. So I think that it would make it a better ordinance if we allowed for the 10% for accessible units.
And are you thinking lot coverage or just square footage?
Square footage.
Okay. Commissioner Haley?
So along those lines, I'll save some comments on that for the deliberation. Can you remind me what the variance allowance was for the Marshall Fire rebuilds? Was it 10% on such factors, design factors for lot coverage and setbacks?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So, you know, so common, I'll talk more about later, is I think something in kind, you know, for ADUs may be appropriate. A related question on size, could you repeat, just so I have my understanding and my notes correct, you gave the example of, based on the current building code, you know, for requirements for bedrooms and occupancy, like what would an 800 square foot unit, you know, translate to in terms of a max expected? Same question for 1,000 as well?
So it really depends on how many bedrooms you put into the unit. I think, I believe it's, you know, if you squeeze in the bedrooms and have a smaller living area, so there's a minimum living area size, I think it's 120 square feet, so that's your minimum, some may have, and then you have to have cooking facilities, and then, you know, it depends on how many bedrooms you have and how big the bedrooms are. I believe it's 70 square feet minimum for a bedroom, that's one person, every additional person in the bedroom is another 50 square feet. So it's, it just depends on how you design it. You could probably, you know, so there's some natural limit on it. I think an 800 square foot ADU, two bedrooms at 120 square feet, might be challenging. So you might end up with more one-bedroom units in 800 square foot ADUs. It just depends on the preference of how you design it.
Yeah, and I'm thinking of like city apartments where, you know, you'll see a 1,000 square foot apartment has somehow four bedrooms.
I'm sure you could, yeah, again, I think if you really wanted to, you could squeeze a lot of bedrooms in there and push that occupancy up.
Okay, and something I'll reference later, do we have a sense for the capacity of our water system? You know, if you were to squeeze stuff like that into Old Town, how far until we hit our breaking point in terms of water pressure?
Oh, water pressure? I have, I really don't know about that, what the water pressure limitation is. I do know they, you know, they, our water, the utilities team has planned for expansion and growth in the city, I'll just say that, as far as water rights and what our processing plants can handle. So we're not at capacity right now. So there is some built-in capacity...
So there's some margin?
There's definitely some margin, and then I think the idea is that, so I think there's different philosophies again. I think if the city wants to promote ADUs and have the barrier to entry lower, I think you could lower the, you know, lower the TAP fees or the expansion fees. This is something that price city council's gonna have to grapple with, and again, the idea is that if you've got two people living in a house and you build an ADU, you have two additional, one or two additional people living there maybe, they're gonna use more water, so there's more demand on the system naturally by building the ADU. So I think the city's gonna have to decide, now again, this isn't in this ordinance, I think if you wanted to make a recommendation to city council on TAP fees in general, that you'd like to see TAP fees either eliminated or reduced as a way to promote, you could put that in your motion, we would reflect that to city council, even though it's not part of the zoning ordinance, if you felt like that was appropriate.
So then, so while we're discussing that, the condition would look like something that said it had to be an amendment to zoning, to address that?
No, no, yeah, so I wouldn't worry too much about, like, the process-wise, you could even make a separate motion, so you're, you have a resolution in front of you, I don't think you have to put it in your resolution, because your resolution's all about the zoning code. You could simply make a motion as the commission and say you think it's in the best interest of the city to either not have a TAP fee, like a lot of cities have, or try to find a way to adjust or reduce the TAP fee, just as a way of promoting affordable housing. I'd recommend that you simply make a motion on that, if you deliberate that and you want to do that. It's not strictly within your purview, because it's not a zoning code issue, but I think council would appreciate your opinion on that via motion, we'd make sure it was in the staff report, it would be in your minutes for city council.
Okay, great. Additional questions for staff?
Another public comment was inclusionary housing, and whether this is the right place to apply policy on whether or not ADUs are exempt or included in that.
Yeah, so a couple, so these are my thoughts on it, there's, you know, with inclusionary housing, you certainly want the units that are included in that to be of a similar, same nature to the base units. That's kind of a tenant of inclusionary housing, so that those who have less means, you know, aren't, you know, put into the lesser housing, so to speak. I could see a path where if you're exceeding the 12% with AD, we already have something in our inclusionary code that has alternative agreements. So for example, if you're maybe saying, well, we're gonna do, every house is gonna have an ADU, so instead of 12% of units, we're gonna have 100, we're gonna match the number of units, that's a, could be an alternative agreement, but I don't think 12% ADUs to match, you know, the... But I don't think 12% ADUs to match, you know, the, all of the units would meet the spirit of inclusionary zoning.
Understood and agreed. But is this the time and place to apply that policy as opposed to putting it in our housing plan or some of them?
No, so we are working on an update to our inclusionary zoning. So we've been to city council to get some feedback. We're drafting it, and you're going to get to weigh in on that. So as Mr. Johnson indicated, I would agree with him. You'll be seeing that ordinance, and that'd be a really good, good opportunity to address ADUs. So that's coming in the next couple of months, probably.
Great. Any additional questions before we close public hearing? Seeing none, I will now close public hearing. And the planning commissioners will deliberate after a short break on the evidence presented during deliberations. No further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Why don't we recess for five, five minutes, coming back at 8:07. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Why don't we discuss it a little further? And you would support, not us?
I mean, we, like, again, our, you know, our directive, policy directive is to facilitate, support, you know, to the extent practical and to the extent sensitive to neighborhood context, et cetera. But, I mean, it's glaring how high the fees are as a barrier relative to the cost of building an ADU. That's outside of planning commission's purview. That's outside of our purview. But anything sort of on record that can articulate your position, I think, you know, is helping with that. So we're on the same team, obviously, but...
Yeah, not necessarily as a condition, though.
No, it wouldn't be a condition of this ordinance itself.
Yeah. Commissioner Mahaly?
Yeah, so I have some ideas which I'll share if we collectively decide that's appropriate. But, but to me, how I, you know, and we'll get into this in the comments, how I feel about it and the knobs that we can control, namely size, relate, how I feel about that and would recommend relates to how we would handle this issue. So while it's outside the purview, I think it's definitely, you know, we're on sort of squishy ground because it's all systematically related, right, in terms of what we can control? So, you know?
Yeah. So I would recognize it's outside of purview. I would think that perhaps the kind of middle road would be appropriate, where we say that they try to look at what would an alternate fee perhaps be? I don't know that I can go so far as to say, I feel like we're pretending there's no impact if we say there's no fees at all. So I'm curious what other people think, whether it should just be no fees or...
Well, I don't, again, I don't think we can really decide that. I think I, I would think I would be in favor of recommending that they consider an alternate fee. That's not really, again, our decision to make. And as for Commissioner Mahaly's thought about the size and that way with the TAP fees, I think, one thing I think we should think about is that this is a work in progress. And I think there's going to be, there's moving parts from different parts of the government. And that, you know, I think this is a really thoughtful proposal to try to comply with the state statute, which doesn't give us a lot of leeway. And I think that there's room to get started, and then, you know, we can adjust if things aren't working.
Sure. Additional thoughts on this issue?
Yeah, I guess I'm also in favor of doing, making this, having a separate motion that does speak to the TAP fees. And again, like we're all sort of saying, I mean, city council has to figure these things out from a whole budgetary perspective. And so they, they will bring all that expertise into their discussion. But I do feel like it, and especially with staff's statements, statements about this, I think it would be helpful for us if we have some agreement around, you know, minimal fees or low fees or something that we do make a motion. That's, that's my perspective. I think it would help, I think it would be a good statement to council.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think at most minimal fees, but I guess there's another thing to be said, well, that if you're not increasing the service, the size of the service to the facility, to the building, that, that in theory, most of the cost, but not all of the cost, is addressed in the consumption fees, right, that you pay on your water bill, but not all of the cost, right? We also know, it was interesting, a public comment recently for a different issue, that the commenter raised was that the new water that we're buying as a city is way more expensive than the old water.
Right.
And that, so when we're looking at that, that's part of it. And so that's where perhaps an impact fee is appropriate? I don't know.
I agree. I mean, so staff put a lot of time and effort into coming up with the analysis that presented the information about changing the code, right? And then at some point during the evening tonight, somebody said, what about TAP fees? So we've been talking about this for a hot 20 minutes, right? Pretending like we have the information where we're able to effectively propose some, you know, specific language, like, that's just wrong, right? And we should talk about the fact that it is something worth recognition and talking about with due diligence and with analysis. You know, when you look at this, an attached ADU could be 1,000 square feet. You know, that's quite frankly bigger than some houses in Old Town. And saying that there's no fee associated with that, you know, like that there's no impact associated with that, again, that's, that's just wrong. So, you know, I, I think that it absolutely needs some attention, some analysis, some, you know, deliberate and intentional kind of focus that I'm happy to, you know, propose to council that with the adoption of this, that there needs to be a deliberate evaluation of what a, you know, proportional impact fee or development fee would be associated with the infrastructure that's going to be required to serve these if this passes.
Yeah, my, my perspective is very in line with Commissioner Choi's. I mean, I think it's important, we need, we need to acknowledge and, and have a plan that, that accounts for the fact that it's not no impact. And, and you said exactly what I was thinking, you know, if it's 1,000 square feet, that is comparable in some places adding another house that wasn't there before. And so I think it, you know, I think we need to find whatever that balances with due diligence of, of, you know, attainable, yet acknowledges the challenge of water in the West and finding water for an increased population density. So I would hope that whatever fee is determined is that balance of attainable, but also, you know, commiserate with the, with the level of perceived impact of the addition.
Great, all right. So then I think we're all comfortable with leaving it as-is, right? So when we look at what is before us today, silent on it, and we ensure that it is actively addressed in the future?
I do believe that, I think that there's a consensus, at least from what I'm hearing, that the commission feels comfortable making a separate motion outside of what's on the docket to urge council to have a deliberate consideration of what an appropriate TAP fee would be for an ADU.
We don't really have the opportunity just to make a motion out of it, but...
I would like to make a strong statement.
Yeah, passed on.
I guess I, I guess I thought I heard staff say that that might be the most appropriate way to do this.
A motion?
Yeah, a separate motion.
We can make whatever motion we want.
Well, it might, it might be, it might be at the section of the agenda that is items not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Under Planning Commission comments.
I think if you don't make it a condition of the ordinance and you just want to make a motion as a body, you know, they're going to hear all of your individual comments, at least in the minutes. We actually give them a recording of this deliberation as well so they can hear it. But I don't think you're crossing, you're crossing too far, you're not going too far across the line if you just want to make a motion as a body to recommend, if you're all on the same page. I'm hearing different things too, so...
So as a procedural measure, we've never done anything like that.
It's, it's not normal. It's unusual, but I think it's, it's fine. I don't, I don't think, if you feel strongly as a body, I think council would appreciate, they can take it or leave it, right? Like, it's just a recommendation, and I think it would be fine. They'd probably appreciate your opinion on that because they're going to be grappling with this.
So I think what we're saying, while staff have maintained silent on the topic, we don't believe we should stay silent on the topic. Someone needs to give it due diligence and consideration, is essentially what we're saying.
I think, I think the issue is not that it's our silent, it's just not a zoning issue. It's a TAP fee issue. So there's nothing to put in the zoning ordinance. It's, it's for another, it's for city council and whoever does TAP fees.
I think what we're saying is, we want to be sure city council give it some attention.
Yes.
And I think we're, we're recommending minimum reasonable fees.
In order to encourage this program to work.
Yes.
You know, like that's what we're trying to do.
To remove the obstacles.
Right. We're trying to remove the obstacles and hope that we can get this program kind of up and going and let council and public works, you know, to kind of determine the fee structure.
But I think, I mean, if we have the opportunity to voice an opinion of minimum reasonable as opposed to standard TAP fees, that would be our collective recommendation.
As opposed to none, right?
Right.
That's the spectrum that we're looking at.
So at minimum, you know, we would, there'll be minutes, but we'll also highlight the key takeaways from Planning Commission, like, we could do it in the staff presentation, we can, we'll do, also do it in the staff memo, so it's elevated.
Okay.
Like, this is what was decided.
I think you have enough without us inventing a new procedural...
However you want to handle it, yeah.
Yeah, okay. It's always worked in the past. You'll get the message out of them. Thank you. All right, additional deliberations?
So, sorry, just to be clear, so we're not going to do a separate motion, is that what?
I think, I would recommend that we don't.
I think we've been very clear in our discussion, and as long as this discussion makes it to council, I would be comfortable with not doing a motion, but they will hear, they will hear our words.
Okay.
Sounds good.
We'll put a comment in there attempting to do the effect of Planning Commission recommends that city council consider reasonable reductions in the water and sewer TAP fees for accessory dwelling units, to the extent practical, something like that, to support development of, something like that.
Maximum reasonable.
Yeah, if that's, something like that, if that's okay.
Minimum reasonable.
Or potentially waiving it.
Right.
I mean, that, maybe the analysis comes out with something that says, really, it should be waived. So, to be continued, yes. Commissioner Baskett, did you have another issue?
I do. I want to go back to the issue of allowing 10% more square footage if the unit is accessible. And I'm wondering what my commissioner, fellow commissioners think about that and staff?
Well, I have a question about that. If we're talking about making a unit accessible, do we really want to talk about square foot or do you want to talk about lot coverage?
I think it needs to talk about both because they're, they're inextricably linked.
I might have an answer to that. So I think this, we actually, section 1752, 55 of the zoning code, it's reasonable accommodations. And so if somebody comes to the city and says, we want to do a, build a unit that's accessible for people with disabilities, they can request a 10% deviation from any our zone, from our zoning standards, including lot coverage.
Do we already have that?
So we have, we have that so that, and it's an administrative review. So if somebody makes a written request and says, we want a 10% deviation because we're making an accessible unit for somebody with a disability... because we're making an accessible unit for somebody with a disability, that could be granted through an administrative process. So it's there. So I just want to make sure you knew it was there. You could also make it automatic in this ordinance so that they don't have to make, well, they'd still have to make a request because we'd have to grant it one way or another, so.
But what would, what would the criteria be?
So the, the criteria is that they need a reasonable accommodation per the Fair Housing Act and that the city has the opportunity to grant that up to a 10% deviation. Really, I've, I've seen these come in and we will grant these certainly if somebody needs that accommodation. But there's no criteria other than that they need it and that it's, that we grant it via the Fair Housing Act as a reasonable accommodation.
Okay. So to Commissioner Baskett's question, I'm certainly in support of that request. I guess I should have asked earlier, lot coverage in general, in Old Town, I'm just going to ask you an impossible question, but given current lot coverage allowances and given current lot coverage, how, what, what size ADU do you think most people could reasonably actually put on a lot? Because I'm wondering if many of them are already essentially at limit and the ADU allowed would be relatively small at best.
We haven't done that analysis specifically of which, and I don't know if we could accurately, honestly. But, you know, I think it's going to be highly variable. I don't think we can say the majority of the lots are at or near. And there may be others in the audience that know better, but I don't, I mean, there's a lot of lots that have built out, you know, and gotten close to it. But there's a lot that have the original structure, that don't have any additional accessory structures that have some room. I mean, the direct answer is, we don't know for sure, but I'm confident that there's a sizable amount of lots in Old Town that are not at their lot coverage.
But I'm, I'm guessing there won't be many 800 square foot ADUs in Old Town.
We don't know. So.
Well, I mean, yeah, we don't know. You're right, yeah.
So staring it back towards deliberations and away from staff questioning?
It sounds to me though, like, and this is also, sorry, it's kind of a question, but it sounds to me like the public accommoda, or the accommodations, reasonable accommodations rule there focuses on need. It may be still, I'm thinking it may be still useful to put it in the ADU code because it could, if somebody wants to build it, like, they don't currently need it, but they want to make it accessible for renters. They wouldn't currently have a need and that might, I mean, I don't think they would deny it, but it might be useful to send the message and put it in the ADU.
Yeah, I don't think the use of the word need in that situation is one that says an immediate need. I, I think the need actually relates back to the property owner's request to accommodate that as a need. So I don't think that's an issue unless.
We could certainly elevate it and call more attention to it more explicitly. It's already there, but you know, it's pretty buried, so folks not, may not know to look for it.
So one thing to think about, not necessarily related to the lot coverage, but the square footage, and understandably, in my opinion, I think they are linked. There's, there's, when you look at the proposed language, for affordable housing, there's already a 25% variance for detached and a 20% variance for attached ADUs. For both affordable and historic. So if you look at the proposed language, if you're in one of those two categories, for a detached, you can be up to 1,000 square feet. And for the attached, you can be up to 1,200 square feet, up from the 800 and 1,000. So if there's a variance, it's going to be contemplated for another category. You know, does it make sense to have it be in line with what those other variances are already written as, as opposed to just 10%?
Yeah, I, I'm wondering if any of the commissioners understand, I actually can confess lack of knowledge on why we have that historic allowance. If anybody truly sunk in as to what that was, or we could let you chime in.
So you're asking why that is in the proposal? So there is a, there is a, a policy in our historic preservation plan, an adopted policy, that ADUs can support historic preservation goals. It doesn't explicitly call for this specific thing. But, you know, we were looking for opportunities to incentivize priorities for the city, landmarking being one of them in Old Town, deed restricted affordable housing being another. So that's really all that is.
It sounds, it sounds to me now that I hear you say that, that it may, it may be allowing larger ADUs might encourage people not to tear down their smaller historic buildings. Is that the thinking? To preserve the original buildings.
Sorry, then to jump back to the original question. So as far as streamlining, should we have the same thresholds?
Right, that was the question.
20, 25 instead of just 10?
Yeah.
Straight across?
Yeah, 25 on detached and 20% on attached.
And that's still a, but so in the case of historic, that allows you to go beyond the lot coverage that's allowed, right? That's what the allowance is?
No, it would just be the, yeah, just the square footage, yeah.
Just the square footage?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay. So in this case?
So, yeah, I mean, my, my, my thinking is, hey, if there's a variance, let's just make it the same, right? I mean, if there's a criteria for variance, great, if it's for accessibility, if it's for affordability, or if it's, you know, to, to try to incentivize not tearing down everything but the front door of the house, you know, for the historic preservation, like.
But I do think there's a lot coverage issue that's separate for accessible homes, because if you want to build a home that's all one level, you might need to use up a little more lot.
Right.
Do we want to, do we want to ask that they build that in?
I, I, yes. And again, I think, I think lot size and, you know, square footage on the accessibility question is absolutely the same topic, because you're not going to have a two-story accessible ADU, you know, with an elevator. Right.
Yeah, because of that.
Right.
Kind of related to this whole idea about what these ratios are and whatnot. There's also the language in that talks about the maximum size where the ADU cannot exceed 49% of the square footage of the primary unit. Again, I think that's good in its intention. I think the thresholds that are established for 800 and 1,000 square feet or 1,000 and 1,200 with the other variances are kind of those limiting factors. And the 49% of the primaries, primary unit limitation really only serves to disincentivize ADUs mostly in Old Town Historic District, where some of the houses are already 1,200 square feet or 1,000 square feet. And if you can't have more than 49% of the primary, primary unit square footage, and you have a 1,000-foot, you know, historic home in Old Town, then you're only going to get a 490-square-foot ADU that would be really hard to get more than a one-bedroom, half-bath, you know, ADU in, which doesn't address the idea of creating more affordable housing stock.
Yeah, there is a 500-square-foot minimum per the state we would have to allow. And the other way to think about it is it, it could flip, you know, if you want to make one unit bigger, the other one becomes an ADU, the existing one becomes an ADU. It can't be in front, yeah, there's, I mean, you can't be in front of it, there's the limitations, but yeah.
Right.
In front of it.
It has to be behind, it has to be behind the front of the primary.
I think that is a, that's actually a serious consideration. So you, you made the comment that, you know, potentially this preserves more existing properties if people are able to build a larger ADU on the property. I mean, exactly that scenario, there's a 1,000-square-foot, 100-year-old home. You know, rather than scrape and build because you want a 2,000-square-foot home, you're, we're disincentivizing people who may build an 800-square-foot new home at the rear of the property and retain the, the existing. I mean, it may be a corner case scenario, but it, it just does seem odd that you're going to limit an 800-square-foot ADU because there's a 1,000, already a small property. It's almost like.
I mean, the, the additional allowance for historic properties helps, but it doesn't, I see how it doesn't get us all the way there.
I, I think my point is, I, you know, the square foot limitations, I think, achieve the objective of, you know, managing the explosive growth potential of ADUs and that the 49% seems like a somewhat arbitrary calculation that doesn't.
And maybe not necessary because of the square footage.
It's not necessary because of the square footage limitations. So.
So if it might not be necessary, but it serves as a.
Disincentive.
Disincentive.
I, I would just strike it.
Was that language borrowed from other?
It's just, you know, a, a sort of a principle of what, what it means to be accessory or subordinate is that it would be smaller. And so it's just to explicitly state that essentially. And it's part of, and it's, part of it is, it's part of the definition really of an ADU. If you, whichever one is less square footage generally is going to be considered the ADU on a lot. And it could probably flip and ebb and flow. But I don't, I can't think of, I can't think of an issue with eliminating the, with the 49%. I think it just adds clarity to what an ADU actually means. So I'm processing that.
You know, when, when, when I hear, you know, we hear this, this argument a lot, and I think that, you know, the number can fluctuate. But I think if the city desires to have more density in these areas and they don't want to have a square footage limitation, really what we're starting to move towards is just duplex zoning. So certainly you, cities could do that. They could just say, hey, we're going to go to duplex zoning in these zone districts. Then that's just another policy decision that adds density, but allows bigger units instead of these really small units. But that isn't what the state law is requiring. The state law is envisioning and requiring accessory, which are smaller and subordinate. We're basing it off, like, we're basing it off of what other cities do. This, and it's a character issue. You can go bigger. But in any case, it should probably be smaller than the primary unit. But if you've got a 3,000-square-foot unit and then you allow ADUs at 2,999 square feet, you're really just allowing duplexes at that point. And that would be the direction we'd go.
And, and that's exactly the direction I was thinking, you know, in, in this discussion, you know, I, I think that is a, a a very different discussion than ADU. So I, I am in favor of keeping the language there for the size, you know. It's also part of it, you know, the comment we hear every time, you know, an issue like this comes up is the character of, of the community. And so, you know, if, if we're going to go the direction of allowing an ADU to really be an equal-sized unit, then you're going into the duplex conversation, which is a huge policy decision, which I, which I think we should have separate from a, a state mandated ADU discussion that we're having here. So I personally am in favor of keeping those size restrictions.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't.
That way as well, yeah.
But I don't think we're saying it would be equal size. It's still an 800-square-foot limit. We're just using the example of a 1,000-square-foot existing 100-year-old home and allowing someone to build up to 800 square feet. And not restricting them to 490 square feet.
And it still has to hit setbacks.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're right.
It just seems incongruous that, you know, somebody is forced to build a much smaller ADU than every other lot in town because the existing 100-year-old home is only 1,000 square feet.
So I think what we're, what we're talking about now, it sounds like it's not getting rid of the size limitations, it's getting rid of the 49%.
Yes, yeah.
Keeping the size limitations.
Right. I, I think the other component will still govern and ensure that we're not getting, you know, essentially these duplex scenarios.
Yeah, I mean, you play the scenario out, right? Somebody's scraped and built a 2,000-square-foot home and eliminated the 100-year-old home that was there. Now they're allowed to build 800 square feet, subject to lot percentage. But the person who's preserved their 1,000-square-foot home can only build 490 square feet.
But are the economics there to, are the economics there to, to gain 300 square feet? Because we have to at least allow 500 square feet.
Right.
So I, I'm not convinced that scenario will play out en masse because you're only, you know, you're scraping a home and, you know, building all brand-new IECC 2021 energy codes, all for an extra 300 square feet. Maybe they, if they're going to tear it down, they're going to tear it down.
No, no, my point being, somebody who has already teared it down or torn it down can, can build 800 square feet. Somebody who has not can only build 500 square feet. Why wouldn't you give the, the property owner the choice?
I mean, because, because we're trying to limit the scale and, and, and still maintain it as an accessory instead of, you know, 1,000 versus.
The duplex.
Yeah, so avoiding the duplex. So I, I see what you're saying. I think I just disagree.
Okay, now I'm stuck in the middle. What are people thinking?
I think with Commissioner Ray Haley on this, just again, because this is an incremental, this is a particular purpose. I feel like I've been losing that focus, but this is a particular purpose about accessory units. Raising the issue of like duplex zoning, I think, is, is kind of clarified for me that there are multiple issues here we're going to have to be talking about with density. This is just one tool in the toolbox.
And to be very clear, when I talk about size, why I'm sticking to, to the square footage and, and thinking about, you know, I ask all these questions about capacity and bedrooms and zoning, you know, what I'm worried about is the number of bedrooms you're fitting in because that's going to correlate with the impact on water and parking and all the other, you know, all the other implications of higher, of higher population density, you know. I'm, I'm most concerned about water and parking, you know, the others are certainly true, emergency services, just to name a few. But, you know, that's why, you know, we don't have many knobs to, to, to control. This is one that I think we need to be very careful on, you know. And so I still think, again, in terms of community feedback, we hear time and time again, you know, character of the neighborhood. And so we don't have, we have, we're arguing about this much, right? 500, 800. So I just think we need to be very careful here.
Commissioner Lee?
With the chair's permission, can I ask a, a staff question related to this?
Yes.
Would these be subject to variance requests?
Yeah, you could, you could request a variance, just like you could for any other type of accessory structure.
So if this instance came up where somebody had a historic home and they said, but I, I have this 1,000-square-foot historic home, but I want to have an ADU that's 700 feet in size, is, does the, would the current code allow for a variance such as that?
We'd have to look at our variance criteria, honestly, and I can do that here. I don't know that explicitly, they may need to explicitly allow that variance, if that's the direction you all wanted to go.
Okay, I, I was just wondering if that could be a quick fix to.
There has to be a physical hardship on the property for the variance criteria, so that, that's where it gets. Theoretically, they could grant it, but you'd have to meet that criteria.
And then you have to go through the whole board of adjustments process.
Yeah.
There's a question of whether they're even eligible to ask for a variance, I guess is what I was trying to.
Yes.
I feel like we should get back to Commissioner Baskett's original question, given the latest of the hour, but about how we might want to handle this. I mean, if we go with, as Commissioner Cullen or Choi was saying, go with 20, 25% instead of the 10, and then would we specifically tie it to?
Actually, can we jump back on that after we resolve this first issue? We do need to get back to that.
Okay.
This is like a separate issue, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, my position hasn't changed. I think it's incongruous that somebody could build a 2,000-square-foot new home and have a much larger ADU than someone who's preserving a historic home.
I, I, I completely understand staff's comment about trying to maintain the idea of an accessory, an accessory billing. I understand the complexities of saying, you know, when you, when you start doubling a, a house or a, a structure, then it becomes a duplex. And, you know, that in and of itself is problematic. I do think there are enough built-in safety measures in this, you know, whether it's on the square footage of the development, the lot coverage, the setbacks. All of, all of those things are going to prevent, you know, the true duplex development of this. But even, even with those, instead of the 49% metric that's in there, you know, I, I would, I would be more comfortable with even a statement that says the ADU, you know, can be a maximum of this size square foot and be smaller in size than the primary residence or the primary unit. You know, because I think that speaks to the intent without necessarily arbitrary, arbitrary numbers that, you know. I'm not, I'm not totally sure where that came from.
I'm still leaning just towards sticking with the 49% as is. We're really talking about that difference between 500 square feet and 800 square feet potential. We don't.
I'd, I'd argue that's a, that's a two-bedroom versus a one-bedroom. That's not insignificant.
How, how about if I propose 48%?
I thought you were pushing for 70 or zero. I mean, no, no.
I, I think, yes, smaller than the existing.
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to highlight the fact that 49% is an arbitrary number. So if, if we're coming up with arbitrary numbers, I would like to say 36.2%.
But I thought you were trying to, I thought you were arguing for the abolition of the percentage requirement so that.
I am. I am, with a with a hyperbolic statement about 49 being arbitrary.
Just just so we're clear, we're talking about attached, right?
No, detached or attached.
Sorry. This just says attached.
Well, we're using these numbers, we are, yeah.
Well, but the 49%, the way I'm looking at, it's it's the page, I can't find it, it's page four, but it's it's the detached ADUs, less than 50% of primary single family unit building floor area. That's that's the proposed.
I I'm looking at, it's labeled on, it's labeled in the footer as page one of seven of the proposed ordinance language.
One of seven? Again, looking at page four.
Section 1716030, item three of maximum size under B. Accessory dwelling units cannot exceed 49% of the square footage of the primary unit. I I'm just I'm just trying to say, I I agree with the idea that that says it should be smaller than the primary, it's an accessory unit. I think that there are good safeguards in there that talk about maximum square footage, setbacks, lot coverage. I I I'm my, you know, I I don't like false flags in terms of presenting data or metrics that don't necessarily have a a a good, you know, defensible rationale behind them. And the 49% to me seems like it wants to go towards the intent and somehow just decided on the number of 49%. It's like the 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 value of the tap fee.
But you'd like to get rid of it.
I I would I would I would like to avoid the appearance of a false accuracy.
I mean, I guess I guess I interpreted the. I interpret the percentage to mean just that you can't be bigger than, you know, bigger than half the size of the house.
Right, yeah.
So that that's that, to me, is why we're at that. It sounds, yeah, it sounds, yeah, it sounds kind of arbitrary, but I think it's speaks to what the description that staff had about trying to keep them, you know, subordinate.
Keep them actually as an accessory, you know.
Yeah, I think that's why it's, I mean, it's sort of half, less than half.
Right.
Yeah. But it is, but it is arbitrary.
Is it half the square footage or half the footprint or, right? Because that's another question.
It says square footage.
Right, and I know what it says, but I'm I'm saying, what is the intent again? Like, you know.
To keep it subordinate, right?
Yeah. And my point is, I mean, I I hear what you're saying about there's enough bounds, particularly, you know, in in the area that is, you know, the Board of Adjustments, which which I have served on. I mean, I you you could have a a single story, right, of a good footprint. If I'm understanding this correctly, you could add an ADU above it, you know, you're not changing lot coverage. Is that true? If you're popping the top?
Yeah, lot coverage is just the footprint of the building, not the.
Yeah, so I mean, like, so in that scenario, you you there are scenarios you could think of, you know, we could do an exhaustive search, but I think you could still game the current, if we remove that condition, you could still game the current regulations and 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 end up with something that looks more like a duplex than than, you know, an ADU. And so I think we, you know, whether it's 49% or some arbitrary integer between there and 100, I think we should have something to acknowledge it as an ADU. I'm not saying, you know, I'm against duplexes, I'm saying that should be a separate discussion at a at a town policy level, separate from our trying to adopt and comply with a a state mandated ADU regulation.
Yeah, I mean, I think I think that is an important distinction between ADU and duplex.
That's what makes it an ADU.
Right. And once you've exceeded that, so is 49 too low? Is 75 a better number?
I think that's what we keep coming back to. It's it's an arbitrary number, and I think we agree, smaller than.
So how about just smaller?
Smaller than makes sense.
We have to be 99. I mean, by definition, smaller than is 90%.
Yeah, yeah. Because, I mean, you could play all sorts of ridiculous scenarios, so now.
That's a duplex.
Yeah. So I I think I think this is a visual preference. So when in planning, we talk about visual preference, right? Because if you you could literally be one square feet less and you couldn't distinguish it as being subordinate at all, like, they they would look exactly the same. So I think that's why we're recommending something in between. I think what you would need, and I, there is some level of, I think you did some some massing in the staff report, right, to show, so those are those are accurate roughly to the square footage. So you can look at the images that were in the staff report and see what an 800 square foot detached based on, you know, a kind of a mo- a modest old town house would look like, and you can look at that. It it's arbitrary, but it's also, it's not, it's based on, in the community, what you're looking at, what feels proportionally appropriate, and that's for the community to decide. And so if you feel like, when you look at those images, and we can always get more images, but if that looks like proportionally the way you'd want the community to look, then it's the right size. If you want to see something that's larger, you know, that's an image that could be made, and you could say, well, what would that look like? Right, we can make an infinite number of these scenarios. So I would just encourage you to think about, as you're walking through Old Town or walking through one of our suburban neighborhoods, what, you know, what would feel like it it was a accessory subordinate unit from a size standpoint? So I would just say that.
Sure.
Thank you.
And Director Zakaria, I appreciate how you framed that because you talked about it from the massing perspective of an 800 square foot home, right, or 800 square foot ADU, which I think is the appropriate question. Maybe, you know, almost rephrase, reframe my question from a lens not just of proportionality or, you know, metrics, but maybe think about it from an equity perspective. Just because you currently have a lot that has an 1,100 square foot house as your primary unit, when you potentially have a 3,500 square foot home here and a 3,500 square foot home here, you know, and both of those adjacent properties are allowed to build 1,000 foot, 1,000 square foot attached ADUs, and you're only allowed to build a 500 square foot, that that's not an equitable solution. And.
Well, but at the at that point, couldn't you just build an addition? Right? We've seen that happen with historic homes.
Absolutely.
Or just built as an addition.
Absolutely. If if, again, and this speaks to a little bit of the equity question, if you have the resources. If all you're trying to do is build, you know, a cost effective ADU, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm I'm just, I'm I'm trying to, I'm trying to, you know, provide a pathway that doesn't arbitrarily, you know, prevent someone, whatever their whatever their situation is, from taking advantage of, you know, a great solution.
I'm still feeling more comfortable with the 49% because I I do think we get to the point where duplex is a duplex, and really, right, this is about an accessory dwelling unit. It's supposed to be relatively small in scale. It's not about maxing out your property build out. I don't know that we're gonna run into that many situations. If somebody wants to build the 2,000 allowable in addition to their existing historic home, they can do that. They're not gonna push it through as an accessory dwelling unit. So it's not that they're precluded from doing that. They don't have to scrape the home. If they have the money to build a 1,000 square foot ADU, then they have the money to build a 1,000 square foot addition and preserve the existing home.
Maybe.
I don't know. We do need to wrap this one up, though. Commissioner Baskett, how are you feeling on this issue?
Confused.
Confused, okay, I appreciate that. How are we gonna move forward? How do you, what are we thinking? How how big of an issue is this for you that we strike the number?
I I don't, I don't necessarily think that, quite frankly, it's gonna come up all that frequently. You know, I I do feel, I do feel like there are. I think there is the rationale behind what I'm saying. That being said, right, you can't, you can't ever convince someone out of an idea that they didn't arrive at rationally. And so I can, I can have my perspective, you guys can have your perspectives. Ultimately, the 49%, I think, I think establishing the ordinance in the building code or in the in the in the zoning code to allow for ADUs is important enough of magnitude that the 49% as an arbitrary number isn't necessarily a hill that I want to die on. I do, you know, I will voice, you know, significant.
Do you think we should?
You know, emphasis that I feel like that's a silly number, and I think it should be smaller, but.
Oh, smaller?
Sorry.
Larger.
I think it should be smaller, in air quotes, smaller, smaller than, not 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 less than 49%, smaller.
Smaller than the primary residence.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
I I am in 100% agreement with Commissioner Choi.
Okay. Commissioner Hunt, where where are you feeling?
I'm in favor of keeping the 49% at least for now.
Yeah, okay.
Favor of keeping the 49.
Okay.
Same, I made my position clear.
So you can leave it at that, your 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 opinions will be noted within the minutes, and it very well may come back around another time and maybe moved up.
Okay.
All right, back to this other issue of accessibility, single, single floor ADUs, single level accessible ADUs. So my understanding is that there is enough, like, what would the requirements be? So if somebody comes before you right now and says hardship, we need to, or, you know, accessibility, we want that percentage, what are, what do they have to build into that?
They just have to make a written request as part of their building permit application to request.
Door width or any physical universal access requirements?
No, this is, this provision is specifically for building setbacks, height, lot coverage, and the city can grant up to a 10% deviation on that. If the, if there's a written request that the type of housing being provided is needed for reasonable accommodations per the Fair Housing Act.
In in this scenario, I I would think that it's a pretty simple thing that could be written straight into it that says, you know, during an application, you 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 come for an app, a permit application with a design, when you, when you come with that design, you know, if if through that permit application you can demonstrate that, you know, you know, universal accommodations are included in the design, that is your justification for requesting a 25 or a 20% variance in both square footage and lot size under the categorization of an accessible ADU.
I I like the sound of that, I'll be honest. I don't know what other people are thinking.
I like it, too. I like the, it it mirrors the historic and what was the other one? The.
Affordable.
Affordable, yes. I like that it mirrors those, feels more equitable.
Deed restricted is a very high bar, so I am a little concerned that this may not have that much of a requirement.
Right, so I think what I'm hearing is that if it's built as an accessible unit per code, that it meets all the excess standards to be an accessible unit, that they could be eligible to a 20% lot coverage and 20%.
Square footage.
Square footage, so FA, I guess FA, square footage above the 800 or the 1,000 minimum.
Yeah.
And that if somebody was, if you built to that accessible standard period, they would be eligible for that.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter who occupies it, it's just how they build it.
Right, and just for clarification, the the detached has built into it for the other two categories, a 25% increase in square footage, and the attached has a 20% increase. I think it would be appropriate to allow that 25 and 20% increase in both square footage and lot coverage restrictions.
So we would, the proposal would be to mir- to to have that apply to the accessible units, right, but to also enhance the other, are you saying?
No.
The others as is?
Yes.
Just for square footage? And the accessible is lot coverage and square footage?
Yes.
Square footage, yes.
So just as a question, just for clarity, if somebody landmarks and gets the 25% and they build it accessible.
They don't give 45%.
I mean, seriously, do you want, do you want them to stack on each other or not?
No stacking.
No, no, no.
One or the other. Thank you for clarifying that, that's a big one.
Right. And if they deed restricted, it could be 65%.
Do you want, do you want this as a condition? How would you like to move forward?
Yes, that 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 would be a condition that we would put in, yeah, it would be in your resolution, and then we could incorporate it into the ordinance for council.
Are people on this side of the dais feeling? Yeah, all right.
So I'm I'm forward if we don't stack variances, like.
Right, yeah. All right. Any other, what else? 855, what are we?
Otherwise, I'm, I mean, I like it. I I think it's well, well written and achieves the required state objective requirement, and I think it's a good thing for the city.
Yeah, I mean, given some of the comments we heard earlier in the evening, I I mean, I I thought the state law did a good, or the act did a good job of kind of setting out some of the rationale for why this is a good thing. And and I mean, I guess I really feel like doing something like this helps make our town have a bit, a little bit more equitability, and I I'm hoping that it creates an even better town than we have now. So that's what I, that's one of the things I would say. So I'm I'm gonna support it.
Thank you. Any other clear, coherent, formal thoughts? Otherwise, yes?
No, I'm, I just, everyone else has said it, so I am in support.
All right. With that, then I would entertain Commissioner Mahaly's comments.
Sorry, looking at the time, I don't want to open another can of worms, but I I I think we'd be remiss to at least acknowledge some of the comments about short term rentals and how this relates.
Yeah, been made very clear both through staff presentation that they're simply not allowed.
Yeah, we don't allow them at all.
This doesn't matter.
So.
And those aren't a code question.
So that would be a separate.
Not a zoning code question.
It's already not allowed.
Okay.
Very clearly.
All right. So.
Yeah.
I abstain.
Okay, so glad we, thanks for bringing it up, but yeah. All right, any other personnel? Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So I I will say, I will say it, that I would move to approve Resolution 2, Series 2025, recommending the city council approve an ordinance, amending Title 17 to allow accessory dwelling units with the condition that if an ADU is requested with a design demonstration of accessibility accommodations.
And single story.
And single story, that the detached square footage limitations be increased to 1,000 square feet, the attached square footage limitations be increased to 1,200 square feet, and the lot coverage ratio be increased commensurately for those two categories.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. With a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bangs.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Choi.
Yes.
Commissioner Mulley.
Yes.
Commissioner Baskett.
Yes.
Commissioner Mahaly.
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
Yes. Thank you all, and thank you to everybody who's hung out, getting through this.
When, for staff, when will this go to council?
First reading is March 18th, and then the public hearing is April 15th.
We have any additional planning commission comments? Hearing none, staff comments. So we got a couple issues, overflow meeting on February 27th, comp plan discussion on March 13th. Any other staff comments? With that, then I entertain a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you all.